We had more injured players than subs.
Whenever you're ready over there, just let me know. You ready? Okay. Call a meeting to order of the North Reading School Committee. First item on the agenda is public input. Is there anybody out there wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing no one at this time, we'll move to our student report. And tonight, we have Kristin Shetland.
Hi. So, North Reading football had a game on Saturday, and they beat Georgetown fourteen to zero, so it was a really good game. Golf team, they actually had states today, and a couple of our players got to participate in that. And the team also won the Cal Sportmanship Award. So, that was really special for, and looks nice for our school. PSATs for sophomores and juniors were on Saturday. And also regarding colleges, November first is a lot of the deadlines for colleges for early action. Volleyball beat Hamilton-Wentham on Friday. It was their breast cancer awareness. So, the gym was decorated in pink, and all the donations that they got for the game went to breast cancer. Boys soccer, they went to the Revolution game on Saturday night, and the game, the Rebs actually won one to zero. And that was played at Gillette Stadium. Also on Saturday, Jenna Crawford, she's a senior at North Reading High School, she put on a day called Interfaith Leadership Summit. And basically, it was a bunch of kids getting together from different faiths and learning about each other's faiths. And she did it for her Girl Scout Gold Award, which she'll be receiving now. And eco team has a town cleanup on Saturday. So, they'll be going around the school and different parts of North Reading, picking up trash or raking leaves. And Student Council is up to 4,400 items for their food drive of October. And their total is, or our goal is 5,500, so hopefully, we'll meet that. Fields hockey, they beat Drake at last Friday, and it was a home game. And today was actually their senior, their senior game at home. And Interac went to the Emarc Halloween Dance, which is at Reading High School, and that was last Friday. And girls soccer has a game tomorrow against Hamilton-Wentham, in Hamilton-Wentham. And then on Thursday, they have a game at home, and it's also senior night. They have a game on Friday versus Masco, and then a game on Saturday at Austin Prep.
Four games in four days?
Yeah, so it's a busy weekend. To make states, all the games have to be won.
Put some ice on that ankle. You'd be able to play by bones.
Oh, my, I wish. And for my student work, I am in AP Government class, and my teacher's Mr. McIntosh. And we are learning a lot about the elections, obviously, as they're so prevalent right now. And we split up into groups in our class regarding like question one, question two, question three of the ballot. Then we did presidential elections and Senate elections. And my group was assigned to the Brown and Warren election. And we had to poll members of our school. And we had asked these five questions. And all the information's unanimous, so I didn't, I couldn't bring it in here today. But, um, so these are the questions that I had to ask, like, my peers at school. And where my group is putting together graphs, and we have to present it to the class. And also, unlike November, in November, we're going to be putting on like a mock, like, an election for our school. So, even though a lot of people can't vote yet, they can vote in our school. And we'll be going through the votes and tallying everything up for my class and going over it.
The first question's really easy.
Yeah, well, we needed that information, but I can't use any of the information if I didn't ask. I can't assume anything, so.
No, the first question is, are you a male or female? And I think that's probably the only one Jerry would get right on this call. Sorry, Jerry. There's no, correct, there's no right, right. Everything's all correct.
But, yeah.
Thank you, Mel.
They weren't too hard.
Any questions for Kristin? I believe, aren't there at least two other, I know you're one, two other senior girls who got, what is it, the Girl Scout Golds?
Yeah, I actually got mine in September. And then Colleen Fitzpatrick just got hers. And we're actually all in the same troop, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot. Sorry that you can't play soccer for the rest of the season. I think the girls soccer team has at least a half a dozen girls who are hurt and out for the season. It's been a pretty tough year.
Yeah.
Tough to pile up four games in four days at the end of the season, so it's tough.
Yeah.
Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
Okay, we're gonna shift the agenda around a little bit. And next, we're going to call up a couple of familiar faces, Maureen Vaca and Dr. David Trottin. And they're gonna talk to us about the North Reading Education Foundation. Welcome. I think this is the first time I've seen, no, maybe Maureen, but I don't think I've ever seen David on that side of the table. I think Maureen might have been there once.
Maybe we're on the wrong side of the table.
That's true.
Well, I know you are.
Well, it's a real pleasure to be back here in North Reading and to work with Maureen and Superintendent Willis and John Murphy, and hopefully, many others in the creation of this, the North Reading Education Foundation. So, Maureen and I are here tonight to give you a very brief overview of the foundation. I know that Kathy has provided you with updates of our work over the last year. But we'd like to make this a formal presentation and then also make our first donation to the North Reading Public Schools.
Great.
So, the, we really feel that North Reading deserves and needs and wants a foundation to provide support for students in a very, very focused way. And we know clearly that there are many organizations that exist within the community to support schools and to support students. Our focus is, is a little bit different. And so, I'm going to read to you the mission statement, because I think it's so important. It sets the context of what we're trying to achieve here. But the mission of the North Reading Education Foundation is, first of all, it's a nonprofit organization, and it's committed to the success of our public schools by providing private funding for innovative, inspiring programs and opportunities for all students. Our goals will be to broaden community support for public education here in North Reading. We hope to serve as a conduit from the foundation and corporate and individual donors to fund these innovative and enriching programs. And we also want to ensure the continuation of educational excellence and the enhancement of educational opportunities in our schools for the benefit of North Reading students. We've been working at this for just over a year. And believe it or not, it's quite a process to establish an education foundation. We need to apply for a certain tax exempt status. And so, Maureen Vaca and John Murphy and Superintendent Willis and I have been working to meet those organizational requirements. We have signed a conflict of interest statement. We have formulated our bylaws and our procedures and policies. And we are at the, at the point where we're now filing all of that with the state, because you cannot move forward without getting that background information in place. So, we hope, over a period of time, to run a number of fundraising opportunities. And again, the focus will be to invest in very specific programs here within the schools. We hope to invest in technology. We like to think about ways in which we can support teacher administrative professional development. We also hope to be part of, provide ways to invest in capital improvements, looking at science labs and war language labs and other kinds of capital investments within the schools. And again, we also hope to look for ways in which we can fund learning opportunities for students outside of the classroom. So, we formed officially a year ago. I'm gonna let Maureen talk a little more about that and some of the work that we've done additionally to get to this point.
Well, North Reading Education Foundation, or NAREF, was officially formed on January first last year and recognized by the Secretary of State's office. To date, we have done a number of steps towards becoming an official structured organization. We've met with individuals from other successful ed foundations, such as Newburyport, which has a successful one. We picked their brains on how they formed it, how they maintained membership, what types of initiatives they invest in, and what kind of fundraising activities they engage in. And we want to make it perfectly clear that our education foundation is not here to compete with any of the other generous and valuable fundraising activities that take place in our district. Our focus is going to be on large expenditures. And we value all the other activities that fund, from the parent levels to the boosters groups. And we will not step on anyone's toes. We hope to work in concert with them to get support from not just parents in the community, but businesses in North Reading and outside of North Reading that value education. We have also worked with an individual on a website design, and we'll go live with that at some point in the near future. We're working with the graphic addicts on a logo. We're down to two choices, and that's an interesting initiative to go through. We are holding a focus group on November twenty-sixth. We're hoping to have it over at the horse show. We will be inviting individuals that can lend us some expertise in marketing and fundraising and experience with forming a nonprofit organization. Currently, we have board members, but we need to put the next layer into our organizational structure, which would be directors and subgroups within that level. So, we will be hoping that individuals from businesses and from within town would be interested in joining us. And so, it's exciting. We're at, we're at that point where we're about ready to go live. And it's been a long time that we've had this goal on our agenda. So, we're here tonight to make a donation, our very first donation, to the North Reading Public Schools. We're going to donate an amount of $2,000. And after working with the superintendent and the technology staff, we have identified from your technology plan a couple of items that the superintendent feels would be beneficial for students moving forward. So, we are targeting this money for specific items. They are a Brentford power synced tray for iPads and the purchase of two iPads with Wi-Fi capabilities.
Great.
And we want to, at this time, recognize the Rotary Club of Reading and North Reading. We received this donation from the North Reading Rotary Club. The joint effort of the Rotary Clubs, they held a fundraiser, the Taste of Metro North. And these proceeds come from that fundraising event. And we were one of the recipients of the, the benefits of that fundraiser, so.
That's great.
We are turning it over as our first donation to the school department.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Any questions or comments for either Mrs. Vaca or Dr. Trottin?
Can people make a donation directly to the foundation? And it's a tax deductible donation, obviously, right? If they do that?
Well, the forms that we're filing now with the federal government will give us that tax deductible status. So, until they're filed, they would not be. We are totally legal with the state, but to take the deduction on your federal taxes, we need to finish that process.
So, at some point, that would apply, though?
Yes. The form will be in the week, this, in the mail this week. So, it's just a matter of them approving it. But in the meantime, we do have a post office box. Checks can be made payable to NREF and mailed to post office box 527 here in North Reading.
Kathy, you, would you like to add anything?
Well, I would just like to add that I am thrilled with the progress that has been made regarding the formation of the North Reading Education Foundation. And I see a very bright future partnering with the foundation in order to provide additional resources that promote the excellence of education here for the students.
I agree. And I think it's really great to have two people who were somewhat involved with the school system in the past coming back, coming back and participating again. And, and this is kind of the way that the system is supposed to work, where you get invested, you become invested in something. And even when you either retire, or, well, when you both retire from positions, you still want to participate and stay invested. And I think it's great to have both of you and John Murphy involved. And we thank the Rotary Club for their participation. And we look forward to working with you moving forward. Anybody else?
Are there other members of the board directors, Maureen?
No, it's just the four of us.
Really, so?
We've reached out to individuals that we thought would make great members, and a lot of people are just busy.
Really?
So, if you can think of anyone. Again, we don't want to take away from people that are working on other boards and organizations.
How often do you meet?
We've been meeting once a month.
At least.
And then, you know, when we're in an active season, a few more times, like budget season.
Well, as Maureen said, this is something that's been on our goals for a number of years. I know that David had tried to, to get it moving when he was here. But you can't, active school committee members can't participate or can't be on the board. We could donate money, but we can't participate in the formation of the foundation, so.
Check this off in our goals?
Yes. We can check this off now, please.
All right, that's good. That's always good.
It'll help us on our grade.
If you know of anyone who you think would be interested in learning more, I'll send you the information about our focus group, the meeting date, November. And we would, we would extend an invitation.
And, and just to add, that the focus group coming up in November is, is not directly to recruit members of the board, but to really bring together individuals who bring a wide range of experiences and ideas. It will be a focus group with the intent to pick your brain and, and perhaps strengthen some of our work.
So, the foundation itself might actually run some fundraisers, their own fundraisers?
Yes, that is our intention.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
I think this is wonderful. I'm just so pleased that this has now come to fruition after so much effort and so much thought and, and just, you know, support of this cause. It's so important to us. And, you know, sitting here now, my fourth year, I, I heard this spoken of when I first started. And I know it's been a long time coming, not just in the last two years that you've been working on this. This has been a, a long, long process. So, I, I'm really excited that you chose technology as your first donation. And I, I know that's an area that's strategically very important to our district. And, and we've certainly made an investment in that in the last couple of years. So, I really appreciate that. I know the rest of the members share that sentiment. So, thank you for all of your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Kathy, do we need a motion to accept the donation?
I would say yes.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the $2,000 donation from the NREF.
Second.
Motion by Karen, second by Cliff. Any further discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to, excuse me, have a presentation, a report on our special education program. We have Patty Buller here, and we also have, excuse me, representatives from Walker Partnerships. And they're gonna talk to us about a review they did. That's not me.
That would be Carl.
As a new administrator coming to North Reading in 2010, 2011, my professional goals included gaining knowledge not only of practices in North Reading, but also gaining an understanding of the student population and current services and programming. And during that same year, the superintendent with the administrative council began their work and our work on the continuous improvement planning process that resulted in NRPS 2016. Student Support Services was identified as one of these focus areas in NRPS 2016. And within the Student Support Services Continuous Improvement Plan, three objectives were identified. And within those objectives, several strategic initiatives, including and beginning with an evaluation of our current programs and staffing. So, as we developed that continuous improvement plan, it was extremely important to know where we were, what we want to be, and how we're going to get there. A program evaluation would provide us with information that would support our continuous improvement plan. So, I consulted with the superintendent, and we discussed having an independent evaluation completed. And the program evaluation conducted last spring resulted in commendations as well as some recommendations that truly align with our NRPS 2016. Some of the recommendations highlighted in the program evaluation, we've already begun the work, and we continue that process now. So, tonight, I'm happy to introduce Jim Early and Bob McGardle of Walker Partnerships, who have prepared a brief presentation of the district-wide program evaluation.
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Jim Early, this is Bob McGardle. Let me just give you a little background information about Walker Partnerships. It is a division of Walker, which is an educational human service agency that's been in operations for 52 years. They primarily operate day and residential school in Needham Mass and an alternative high school called Beacon High School, which is located in Watertown. Walker Partnerships was founded and begun in 1994 to help school systems build the capacity to keep children in districts. We've developed an array of services in Walker Partnerships. We do staffing with school systems around program developments. We have thirty staff working in approximately fourteen schools, districts. We do professional development for school districts, both general education and special education personnel. As well as over the last three years, we've done extensive training with paraprofessionals. We do program development, program consultation work with school districts. And we do a lot of case consultation with school districts around cases related to students and the difficulties some students may be having in school. And finally, we do program evaluations. We do approximately twenty evaluations a year. Some of them are district-wide, such as the one we completed last spring here in North Reading, as well as program-specific ones and building-specific ones, depending on what districts are looking for. So, when we met with the superintendent and Patty last, I think it was in March or so, yes, to discuss the scope of work that wanted to be done and looked at, we mapped out a plan, and Bob and I began it. And it takes approximately three and a half to four days onsite work to be completed, and then the extensive amount of time developing the report, which you've all seen have a copy of. So, I'm gonna briefly go through this presentation and just to get you in the right frame of mind. Obviously, let's see if I get this right. Yes, okay, good. Clicker works. So, in, in the, in the process that we go through, we look at every piece of documentation that we can find in the district related to special education. And there's a, as you saw in the report, there's a substantial amount of material that we look at, including random samples of student IEPs, as well as budget, staffing, caseloads, program descriptions, roles and responsibilities, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Coordinated Program Review Report, their follow-up work. So, we try to examine what the district has in form for, for special education. We do a site visit to all the schools and looking into where the special education instructional settings are to get, try to, try to get a sense of the school building and discussions. These walkthroughs, the principals accompanying us. So, we have a chance to have some dialogue about what's working well for them in the building, what some of their concerns and needs are around special education. It's another data collection process that we go through. We did conduct observations of several specific programs, which we'll get into further in the report. And it was designated that these, the co-teaching program, the language-based program, have some time spent where we would observe those specific programs. And then the one-to-one interviews with 24 individuals. It's a, it's a cross-section of people from the, throughout the district, including general, special education administrators and parents. Due to time limitations, the number may seem not high, but 24 individuals met with for 30 minutes, one-on-one, we gain a great deal of information from them. And as you see, the positions that we interviewed do cover a good cross-section of personnel and focused in, for example, on the language-based teachers, special education personnel, obviously, administration, general education, as well as paraprofessionals and parents, so that we get, we get a good feel for what's occurring in those positions and those roles. And they're all from different levels, so that we get the elementary, middle, and high school. Am I, I'm still, yeah. So, there were twenty, no, it's right, there were 27 commendations identified. And that really is, is a way to recognize specific programs and approaches and strategies that the district has put in place to serve students with special needs. You've, you've seen the list. I'm sure there are others that some, some could have been mentioned. We, this, this we get from the document review, from the walkthroughs, and from the interviews. And we feel it's a pretty good indication of how, how the district has been working.
The next section of the report is factors affecting special. Just a word on commendations. One of the things that I like about doing this is that Jim and I have an opportunity, when it's all said and done, to sit down and really begin to look at what we've seen. And in many instances, the commendations kind of jump off the page at us. I'll have seen them, he'll have seen them. And it's, it, to me, it's a section of the report where not often enough that people take a step back and reflect on what they're doing. And it allows us to tell people the good work they're doing in the district. So, the commendation section, for me, is a very important part of the, of the overall. Factors affecting special programs and services. We look to see what, what within the district is impacting on the services and programming for special education students. Here, we saw the census and the needs of the students. There's a significant, been a significant increase in the needs of students, the autism population, behavioral population, whatever it may be. The increase in the numbers of some students based on the disabilities that they have. Fiscal implications, obviously, all districts are trying to expend their finances in the most appropriate manner. How is the district doing that? And how is that impacting on what you're able to do with programs and services? We look at out-of-district placements. And again, as Jim had started off by saying, the, the main goal of the Walker Partnership is to assist you in, in developing capacity. Servicing kids as close to home as possible, servicing kids within the district as often as possible. So, we look at your out-of-district placements, whether or not we see themes to the placements that are, that are there, whether or not we can assist in looking at pockets of students that you may be able to develop programs for back in, in North Reading. Advocacy and legal issues, there are a number of things that came up. Unilateral placements will come up, advocates for parents, legal issues, whatever it may be. We look at all of those things and how they impact the district. Educational experience, what is it that the district is able to do educationally for students within the programs? And, and what is it that if we assist you in enhancing those, will help you to service those students? The next section is findings. There are thirty, there were 36 findings in the report as a result of the review, the walkthrough, and the interviews. And the findings that we come up with are really the basis for the, the foundation for the recommendations. And again, what I like in the reports that we do is that the recommendations we make are substantial recommendations. We, we don't just make a recommendation and say, go off and figure out how to do it. We actually make every effort to put our collective brains together to help the district come up with a way to approach whatever the recommendation is that we're making.
There are obviously quite a few recommendations we made. Some of them, as Patty has already indicated, that the district has, has acted on or is planning to act on. And that's a tremendous credit to the leadership in the sense of taking this report and beginning to digest it right from the, from the get-go when we delivered it. We looked at it, we developed the recommendations in six different sections, all right? Current programs. What, what we're, one of the issues that a lot of school districts struggle with, and this is very common, this is, is when they develop programs, they, in many cases, develop entrance criterias for the programs for students to be placed into. But inevitably, they're, the, the development of exit criteria is not as strong. So, we, we find that in, that in a lot of districts, the entrance criterias are spelled out, but not as specifically as they need to be for all the programs that a district has in place. So, that needs to be reviewed and updated. And exit criteria needs to be developed. And this is for all the services in special education, especially the related services that we refer to as speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Really clear entrance and exit criterias. And there are models out there already in place which can be adapted to a school district's. needs and desires and, and culture. We mentioned the language-based program, it really needs to go under some significant change. We address that in the recommendations, what some research-based programming should look like and how it should be structured. I think the efforts by the district, and, and I observed here at the middle school, the language-based program, and I have to say, I was very impressed with the staff's attitude and the dedication to the students. But the model that was in place is not giving the students with the language-based needs the real structure on a consistent, ongoing basis that they need. I think the work that's been done has been quality work by both general education and special education personnel. But I think the program needs to take a shift in the direction that it's been operating in, in order to give those students a real comprehensive program that is dedicated to their needs. The co-teaching model, and Bob, you can jump in because you observed some of that.
Well, the co-teaching model, it just seems to me that there needs to be some work done on that. I know you've had workshops over the summer. My guess would be that you've begun the year with a whole new focus and mindset on co-teaching, and that's really what needed to happen. People needed to be educated as to how they can come together, how they can support each other, how can, how they can work as teams. And you really, I always look at co-teaching as like a good marriage. When you have a regular ed staff member and a special ed staff member that come together and can make it work, the impact on students is significant. And when you have a special ed teacher who is the, the student expert, knowing what the disabilities are, and the regular ed teacher who's the curriculum expert, and you bring those two together, that's really the direction that needs to happen. And I'm happy that the workshops took place this summer, and I'm sure good things are beginning to happen.
New programs and, and staff, obviously, when you go through an evaluation of this sort, there are going to be areas that are identified that need to be strengthened. Two areas that we mentioned right here, students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs, there is not a constructed program in place to service them. There's a lot of staff attempting to do a lot of good work with these students, but there's not a structured program from elementary through the high school for this population of students. And what we find in most of our evaluations, when, when we look at the out-of-district population, usually fifty percent of the children who are in out-of-district placement come from this group of students. It's a group that's very challenging and very difficult to serve, but it's, but it's a group that can be served within a district, but it does mean capacity building. And we did recommend, obviously, development in that area. And again, we realize that these kinds of recommendations impact fiscally the, the school budget. So, it's, these issues need to be dealt with at your level and the timing. When can this happen? What is reasonable? What plan can be developed? Maybe there's some children in out-of-district that can be brought back if you have a program in place for FY14 or something like that. So, we realize these can't happen overnight, but they need to be looked at. The addition, additional position to full-time team chairpeople, we felt that the size of the district, the number of students, the number of team meetings, annuals, initials, and reevals, that the district could operate very well with two positions dedicated solely to the team evaluation, the team chairperson who operates the, the evaluation process, oversees it, and also deal with some out-of-district placements as well, because those have to be monitored, and they could chair those meetings as well. Under professional development, we wrote a lot about that in reference to the kinds of topics and issues, both for general education and special education personnel, as, as well as paraprofessionals. It's an area of, that where considerable training needs to take place, the paraprofessionals. This is an issue in many, many districts, because the staff you have come from such a varied background and experiences, that their levels of expertise and understanding of children and the needs of children can vary greatly. Yet, these are the individuals who spend probably the most time with children throughout the school day, in either one-on-one or a small group capacity. So, that's something the district needs to deal with, and, and trust me on this, every district is struggling with that issue right there. It is not uncommon. And I know some of it has to do with fiscal issues because of time, time in, in school being compensated for that, and some of it has to do with language and contracts and so forth. So, we realize that there's some struggle there. The one, one area we mentioned was the awareness training of all staff on special education programs, roles, responsibilities, and procedures and practice. This is something that crops up over time. As you have turnover in your staff within the school district, retirements, new people coming in, people relocating, so forth, they have varying levels of awareness about special education. And since it does occupy a great deal of the school budget and a great deal of professional time, everyone needs to be aware of those. So, periodic updating and informational workshops and so forth, but it's, it's something that can be put in place relatively easy. Pre-referral process and response to intervention. I think the district was making some good initial movement in, in the response to intervention process. The pre-referral process, where you take a look at children before the actual referral to special education for an evaluation is made, not consistent. And, and again, this is not uncommon. We find that over time, since the pre-referral has become a legitimate practice in school districts, that people deal with it differently, and they can sometimes practice it very religiously, and then other times, they're not as consistent with it. And, and so that what happens is that some students may be referred before they've gone through this process. So, at a building-based level, it's crucial that this process be in place. As you move more into the response to intervention model, you'll find that these two models are similar in the sense of the way they collect data on students, how they analyze the data, and how they prescribe interventions for those. Both of those actions are not special education, they're regular ed initiatives. So, they're really bringing the people in the building together, administration and all, all the staff together to talk about student progress and how to address some of the issues. See if I can keep this going. Additional recommend, oh, did I go, no, I, okay, I'm on, I'm on the right page, I apologize. Transition between levels, from elementary to middle, to middle to high school. We found that it was, that people had a good sense of what to do, but it varied from, from level to level, and it varied from who we were speaking to. So, it just needs to be tightened up, the steps need to be spelled out, when the process begins, who, who is responsible for what, it's those kinds of actions need to take place. Criteria for the assignment of paraprofessionals. This is a tricky one, because, and this is, this is why it's so important to have strong evaluation team chairpeople, because the, really understanding when a paraprofessional, whatever the title of that position is, we refer to it as, as paraprofessional, but some call it instructional assistants or what have you, but that position needs to have some criteria assigned to it. Why is it, why is it needed? For what are the purposes? Now, for health and safety, that's pretty clear, people understand that. But for other issues, it really needs to be analyzed and set up and establish some real criteria that is right for the district. And, and part of this is past practice, what has occurred in the district and what people believe need to occur, but, so that it's clear to team members. A lot of, a lot, in the interview process, people say, "I don't know how a paraprofessional gets assigned." You know, what, what is that process? Why do we have, what, this student has one, this student doesn't have one, and they look, they seem similar. So, there's a lot of that, that needs to be clarified. Clinical treatment guidelines, I think that's, was clearly outlined, is that when, when staff are doing treatment work with students, that they have guidelines to operate. What they do, how they record the information, how do they follow up on information with other staff, how they follow up with parents on certain information, really spelled out clearly around any kind of treatment work that's being done with students, so that, that the district has clear practices in place and, and accountability. For the office, we mentioned a number of activities that we felt would be helpful in streamlining some of the, the requirements of the office that Patty oversees and her staff. Those are all explained in, in the report. I mentioned, high school program of studies, I only mentioned that, that what we're noticing is, as, as we go through these evaluations over the year, more and more language is dedicated to what is occurring in special education at the high school, what credit is given for certain kinds of special education programming and services. So, it's that kind of explanation which would be helpful for not only students, but for parents as they transition to the, to the high school. And, and the other area that we mentioned is, is, is one that is, takes a lot of issue. The, the district is dedicating resources to summer programming for students with special needs. And it's really, any effort that can be made is, is a positive effort in collaboration with the recreation departments within communities to, to collaborate on program development, because many of the students could benefit, and parents talked to us, especially parents with more moderate to severely involved children, felt that it would, it would be beneficial for their child to be able to participate in programming, both in the district, in summer programming, as well as participating with the recreation department and programming. And I know that in talking with Patty, that, that those, those discussions have already begun. So, that's our overview, questions? And we'll be happy to-
Kathy, would you like to add something before?
Yes, I would. I'd like to start by saying that tonight was a presentation for you to frame the evaluation that had been done, to give you, if you will, an overview, and you will receive the full report. But we wanted to frame the findings for you and have an opportunity for you to speak to the two gentlemen regarding the methodology, as well as the commendations, findings, and recommendations. But I'd also like to say that I was very pleased after reading the report several times, that there were really no surprises. What this report did was validate for us what we had anticipated, some of the changes that would need to take place in the area of special ed. But it also talked about all of the important work that has been done over the years in this department, and the successes that they have realized with the programs that have been put into place. That being said, as Patty mentioned, when we developed NRPS 2016, she had anticipated some of the areas that we wanted to focus on. So, this report really gives us a roadmap. And as with any roadmap, there are many directions that you can take in order to arrive at a destination. We can't do it all overnight, but we can prioritize a lot of the activities that are included in this report, as we have done and will continue to do, and then dedicate resources through the budget process to move those initiatives forward. And I'm very pleased to say that, as has been recognized already, we started the co-teaching initiative, we have hired another team chairperson, so we're moving in the direction that had been released to us in the evaluation process. So, it was really wonderful to see that what came out of the evaluation really supports a lot of the thinking that Patty has shared with me, and the direction that this district has been moving in prior to the evaluation taking place. And I know that they're here willing and, and able to answer any questions that you may have about the evaluation.
Questions, comments?
I have a question and a comment. I'm an evaluator in my real life, so I think this is, it's wonderful when we have the opportunity as a district to use funds to do this kind of work, because it helps us establish a foundation for understanding, you know, what we're doing well, but also where we can improve. And improvement is incremental, it takes time, so, so I appreciate that we have some very strong recommendations, and to the people who actually participated in the evaluation for this process, I think that's extremely helpful. So, for the members of the community that did that, and to our staff and personnel, I appreciate that time, because it helps. I just, my question immediately goes to the, the highest cost thing that we could possibly do, which is new programs for social, emotional, behavioral needs. And I'm, I'm looking forward to reading that in the report, but I was just wondering if you could speak to how big of a gap that is to fill for us? What is sort of the, what are we doing, and maybe this is a Patty question as well, but what are we doing and what is, as a committee, would we need to consider budget-wise to accommodate that? Or at least start the conversation?
You want me to go, or you want to go first?
You should start with that.
Why don't you say what you're doing?
I don't want to go down a road you don't want to go down.
No, but I'd like to hear what we're, I think it is important, what are we doing today, because this is a major area, and it's becoming a larger area in special education, and I think we need to be prepared to, to handle the students who need the services, so.
I think that in, in the last couple of years that I've been here, what I've done is looked at real concretely how many students we currently have placed in out-of-district placements that have social, emotional, and behavioral presentations and, and profiles. And it's very clear to me that that is, is a group of students that can, and as Jim had, had indicated, that we could provide services for in-district, but we would have to have appropriate programming. There are, and this is a population that actually not, doesn't seek out out-of-district placements, it's a population that I feel want to remain in the community, but we don't have the support. So, what I see happening is, you know, obviously, the hiring of a teacher that has that behavioral background, as well as a school adjustment counselor, which we don't have currently. However, in doing that, I think that we could be strategic, because there are a few cases that really do want to return to the district. So, I see that as, if I conducted a cost analysis, I don't feel that to be an overwhelming fiscal issue, and I can certainly do some work on that in the next few weeks to give you a, a real clear outline of what that would look like. But obviously, we would need appropriate staff to begin that, absolutely. A trained teacher, a clinician, whether that be a, a school adjustment counselor or a social worker, working in the program, so absolutely, Karen, I would say that we need the appropriate staff.
If I just, it's not the type of program you don't have a knee-jerk reaction to. You really do need to build the program, because you certainly want it to be successful. If it's not successful, then you've taken several steps back. So, the goal is to assess the students that you're looking at. Obviously, other factors come in, space, all of those things need to be looked at as well. And then what are the supports that are, need to be in place for these students? And I've always said, after being in public schools, Jim and I, for about a hundred and twenty years each, the one thing that public schools can't do, that private schools can do, is when a student has a, has an episode of some sort, the private school can remove that child from the learning environment, learning takes place for all the other children, and then, and they work with the student over here. It's very difficult to do in a public school, because if you did in a public school, where do you find the staff to assist that student out? So, all too often, what happens is, the entire educational environment breaks down when you have one student that's having a very difficult time. So, what you need to do is take a look at the population, look at the resources you need, and build the program small and allow the program to succeed. So, you're right on target with what you need to do, so. And again, just looking at the, some of the data that you're going to see in the report, your enrollment of students in emotional programs, or your, your percentage, is pretty much right on the state average. And North Reading is not the only school district dealing with or trying to come to an approach to work with students with behavioral, emotional needs more intensely in the public school. It's a challenge for many school districts, but it needs to be very well thought out. You need to think of being very proactive, start very small, so you have great success early, and allow the program to build itself.
And, and the suggestion of where to start is always a question, and some districts want to start at the elementary level and then grow the program through the grades. Other districts we've worked with said, "We have, you know, a real need at the high school level," and then others will say, "The middle school level seems to be our area of most sensitivity." So, where you start is not the issue, it's really how you start and putting all the pieces together. And what we find is, when we work with districts on building the programs, that it's over a couple of years, period, and, and we may start the year before a program even is implemented. And doing training with the staff, hiring staff, helping districts with that, and getting the program up and operational, and it may only start with two or three students, but trust me, it, it will occupy the seats in a very short period of time, as the expression goes, "You build it, they'll come." But the idea really is to build the capacity of the district to be able to prevent, to, to reduce students from exiting the district. If you can, you can demonstrate a reduction in students, then you're getting your costs back many times over, because that program's in place for a number of years. And then if you need to build the next program, the next level, either down or up, then that's a year or two out. And you, you know, it may be a five, six, seven, eight-year plan to build a continuum of programming for one population. But it will reduce students from exiting the district, it may allow you to bring students back into the district.
It's really helpful. Tells me that we have some work to do down in the committee in our budget season. It tells me that we have some work to do down in the committee and our budget season.
Any other questions or comments?
I, just a couple of things. Um, one, I, I think it's great that we had this audit, uh, review done, because, um, you know, one of our goals is to attempt to educate as many students in the district as we can. But I also want to make it clear to the community that this isn't us saying, oh, let's save as much money as we can and dump kids back in North Reading. This is, let's see if we can build programs that are as good or better than out placements and do it more cost-effectively. Our goal is to provide every student the best education possible. It's not just to say, let's spend as little as possible, because we can get away with it.
Well, I think that some parents would prefer their kids to be back in the school community as well, so that's the other, you know-
Right. You're absolutely correct on that, because if you can do, demonstrate quality programming, then I, the, the parents, that's what they want.
Exactly. And, and I know that, you know, our former superintendent, Dr. Troughton, um, was, was big on, um, working, pushing the inclusion model, and Kathy's come in and has continued that with Patty and the staff. And, um, so I just wanted to make that clear, that that's, that's what our goal is. And to have these recommendations will be really helpful. I also wanted to point out, I know you mentioned high school, we have put a new program in place at the high school this year, which is basically a postgraduate program, um, which I think is, is working well, and we have a number of students in that program right now.
We do. We have five students in that program right now.
Correct.
And Patty can tell you better than I how well it's working, but we're so pleased that we were able to provide services to those students as post-graduates.
And, and I think that's an excellent way to provide the services we need to provide through the age of, is it 21 or 22?
Twenty-two.
So, um, we are moving in that direction also. But you are right, you know, the high school, you always get a lot of questions about how are you handling IEPs and special education at the high school level? Because many of these students are still gonna, they're gonna go on to college. And so we need to figure out what's, what the credits they're getting and, and how that works and when they're applying for college and how all that fits into, fits into that plan and program, so. But this is great. Really appreciate you, uh, coming in tonight and giving us some background on this.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Great.
And, and just as a footnote, the staff were fantastic.
You, you, some great staff.
They really were. They were, they were, every, everyone who participated in the interviews was very enthusiastic. Um, they really contributed quality information and they really care about the district and the kids.
Yeah. Great.
And you'll see that when you see the commendations and the work they're doing. Um, and I always think it's commendable when the school committee asks for outsiders to come in and say, take a look at what we're doing and see if we can do it better.
Yeah.
So I think you've certainly made a wise choice in taking a look at where you are. You've got some wonderful things going on, but you do need to think about what it's going to look like three to five years from now.
Yeah, some homework to do.
Yes. And it's good that this is a good time, because the budget process for next year will be starting soon.
Right.
So we can start planning, planning some of this stuff, hopefully for next year's budget.
Recalculate our deficit.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jerry.
Yeah, I know. That's what everybody says when they leave.
Yeah.
That's where we came over there.
Okay. See if I can reorient myself here now. We've done the public input, we've done student report, okay. Continued business, the MSBA, SSBC update. Kathy?
Yes. Thank you. There has not been another secondary school building committee meeting since the last school committee meeting. But I'd like to just, um, bring you up to speed with some of the permitting meetings that have been taking place and will continue to take place as part of the process. I did attend the zoning board of appeals meeting on Thursday, October 11th, as requested by our architect, Doran Whittier, um, just to be there to be able to answer any programming questions that, that could have come up regarding the school district. Um, this, um, they were, the presentation went well, but there was a continuance granted until presentations had been made to the planning commission and the conservation commission. So I have some updated information to share with you right now. The planning commission meeting will take place on Tuesday, October 30th, at 7:30 PM. We have a school, secondary school building committee meeting that same night, so I will be leaving at 7:30 to go to the planning commission with the architect. And we have confirmed, um, a date for the conservation commission. It is Wednesday, November 7th, at 7:30 PM. And then the zoning board continued the presentation for Doran Whittier to Thursday, November 8th, at 7:30 PM. So all of those permitting meetings are now falling into place and keep us on schedule with the building project. I will not be able to attend Wednesday, November 7th, or Thursday, November 8th, because I will be with Karen at the MASSS/MASC conference down the Cape. But I know that we will have representation from the SSBC attending with Doran Whittier to answer any questions.
Okay.
And the next meeting will take place on October 30th for SSBC, beginning at 5:30 PM.
And isn't there bigger news that you want to get into here, or is that later on?
I would be happy to get into that larger news. It is another, um, agenda item, but at this time, I would like to announce that, um, there will be a groundbreaking ceremony that will be taking place regarding the high school, middle school building project. And that building, uh, committee groundbreaking ceremony will be held on November 3rd, 2012. It's a Saturday at 10:00 AM, and it will take place at the North Reading Middle School, um, right here, um, where the modulators used to be located. Uh, we do have a program that is still in the planning stages, but I can give you some of the details. We have students that will, um, be singing under the direction of Carla Lister, one song. Um, and we do have speakers, um, that will be speaking to the audience. We have quite a few speakers, but they're going to just say a few words. Uh, Mr. Webster will be one of those speakers as the chair of the school committee.
Breathtaking.
The crowd, that, you just increased the crowd by at least tenfold by announcing me as the speaker.
Uh, we do have, uh, seven speakers, but all short. Uh, we do have the new executive director from the MSBA, Jack McCarthy, coming to speak to the crowd.
Excellent.
So we're very excited about that.
That's great.
Um, we also think, we believe our legislators will be there. I know of one confirmation, the other one is still in process.
I'll, I'll write them so they'll come in.
And there will be-
This is right before the election, right?
Yeah, they'll be there.
Yeah.
This is November 3rd.
Yes.
Yes. And also, we have our actual groundbreaking, and I can tell you that there are 12 students that will actually hold the shovels, wear the hard hats, with the secondary school building committee behind them, as well as representation from MSBA and our dignitaries. Um, and they will actually put the shovel in the dirt for this ceremony. So we'll have representation from elementary school, middle school and high school. And then, following the ceremony, we'll recess into the middle school cafeteria, we will serve hot cider and cider donuts. So we're hoping that we could have a large crowd, because we're so excited about this. I think it's a very important, um, celebration for this community, and it will be fun.
Will there be a 51% reimbursement from the MSBA for the cider and donuts? Do you know?
Um, I can tell you right now that Gilbane is picking up the cost-
Well, that's great.
-of this groundbreaking ceremony.
Beautiful. That's awesome.
And Gilbane is our CM at risk company.
Great. So we're moving along.
We are moving along.
Any questions or comments on the building project?
Do we get hard hats?
Do we get hard hats?
No.
It's a really hard-
We don't eat them, we have hot heads.
I can get one for you if you would like one.
I would really like one.
Okay. Then we will get Karen a hard hat.
I think that's good. Okay. Great. Next, we have, uh, our fiscal year 2014 budget goals. We did not vote on these last time we reviewed them. We made a few changes. Um, I believe all the changes we wanted are reflected in the new draft, so unless anybody has any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve our fiscal year 2014 budget goals.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Venezia. Any further questions? Are any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The animus. That was easy.
Mel, do you want to talk about that recommendation on the level services or giving direction to the administration?
Which one?
I think on, on the, the budget goals there, um, give them some ideas to where we, what direction we want to go in as far as the overall budget, or?
Oh, you mean, I mean, I think we, unless the committee disagrees, I think we should continue with our same policy of level services, and I think in the past, we've said, let's try for level services plus to continue to try to make up for things we have lost in the past.
Modified levels.
Modified level services.
Restore.
Restore. And I think at the same time, however, we need to look, and we'll talk about this later on, at enrollment and how declining enrollment may impact budget dollars we may have to put in other areas, so. So unless this committee disagrees, I think our charge should be modified level services or a level services plus an attempt to continue to try to restore.
Well, I don't know if we should, I, I'd like to modify the level services, but as far as restoring, I think we should try to prioritize. I mean, there may be things that are more important than restoring something that we don't have now, so, you know, to, to go level services and then possibly take into consideration other priorities that the administration or the school committee might have, in addition to the level services.
So you could call it level services plus or modified level services.
Modified, yeah.
And again, last year I brought to you a, a multi-year budget vision that reflected the first year of NRPS 2016. So I'll also bring that forward as part of a modified level services plus, um, which does exactly what Mr. Venezia said. It would be prioritizing, as well as if we need to restore, but then maybe take a shift in direction based on the vision for the district.
Should we get that, and Carl, you chime in here, before, should we get that plan to review again, to see what we were able to put in from last year? And I think we were able to get a lot of it in, especially in terms of technology staff and support, et cetera, and other areas, um, hiring special education staff. Um, but should we get that earlier than we get the budget, so we can take a look at what those priorities are? I don't know if the next meeting is-
Absolutely. I was thinking of bringing that forward in November.
Okay.
Again, reviewing what we, what we've accomplished for FY13, and then presenting FY14. It may come late November, uh, because the administrative council is working, you, if you may, you may recall that there were various proposals that had been put together with a rationale and a direction over the next three years. So we need to update that. Some things were accomplished, so we have others to add to reflect year two of NRPS 2016.
Okay. So is the committee okay with that? Moving forward?
Yes.
Other, other pri, I just want to ask, the other priorities that people are thinking about that we haven't talked about that aren't obvious?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, there may be. I, I think we've been so focused on level services, and then I thought the superintendent-
Special ed tonight that we heard.
Well, the superintendent did a good job last year of coming up with some priorities, and they were fairly modest, too, as far as cost, so.
Yeah.
If there's something I think anybody in the committee wants to add, they should probably let the administration know.
I think now's the time. If we, if we have something, I think we should share.
Well, I think the special ed, some of the special ed things we heard tonight, obviously, should be considered. Uh, the other concern that I have, and, and again, I don't know how we're going to be able to get more insight into this, is, and this isn't for next year's budget, but other things we need, need to start thinking about for when the new school, new high school comes online.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of things we may have to put into the budget that aren't there now, and we're going to have to find funds for those things. So start, we're not going to put them in the budget next year, but let's start thinking about, well, in 2014, 15, when the new high school opens.
Especially if we're going to do it for a year.
Right.
Look forward, yeah.
So if you could look at that, I think we know some of the things related to wastewater treatment, et cetera, and things like that, that we might need to put in the budget.
And of course, now that you've, uh, formally adopted the budget goals, it, it provides us some other structure. For example, one of your goals is to explore the reduction of fees for various programs.
Right.
So as we roll out the budget process, we'll quantify what the, uh, the cost would be, should we lower or reduce a fee. So that can be part of the mix, uh, that the committee can, uh, explore.
Great.
Yeah, that would be great.
And there'll be many other things that we'll try to cost out in kind of little modules for you, that can be adds or, or deletions.
I'm thinking, Carl, this will be a special budget for you this year.
Right.
Very special.
Gold-plated budget booklet.
He's also been a little bit irreverent lately.
Yes.
So we need to handle, get a handle on that. Professional development is my big one.
Yeah.
So I know that's still on our list and has been.
Mm-hmm.
But having seen the presentation from last meeting, I, I feel like even more so that we need to continue to make a good investment, particularly because we have evaluation stuff coming and we want to be supportive of goal-setting and achieving those goals, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next, we have, well, now we're down to the cafeteria regional solutions feedback. And I actually spoke a little bit, uh, last week with Kathy about this, and she had mentioned it to me, and I said to her, it'd be great to have that on the agenda and Carl can, can speak to it. So Kathy, Carl, whichever one of you wants to.
Thank you. Uh, tonight will be very brief, because we're really in the middle of a process. But I reported to the committee, uh, several meetings ago, that there were both federal and state, uh, initiatives that were underway, that were impacting not only our school lunch program, but the food that we provide as an à la carte option during school, after school vending machines, there's a lot of things taking place. So, quite similar to what, um, we have done with the Walker partnerships, although quite, not quite as extensive. We brought in a group of food service professionals last week, uh, from Chartwell, to examine our programs. And, um, in your packet, there's a little, um, no, you don't have it. I was thinking capital planning, excuse me. You will soon get a, uh, more detailed reflection on what this group, uh, was involved with. Briefly, what we did was, we brought in five other area food service directors who were Anna McGovern's peers, who work in other communities, who could come in and take a fresh look at our kitchens. So I, I joined them, and we also had, uh, three, uh, Chartwell management personnel come in, and we split up and we went to all of the schools, and we, we hit a couple different schools each, and spent about five hours apiece here, looking at our school lunch program. The purpose of the visit was to examine whether we were compatible with the new federal guidelines that are in place, uh, to look at the presentation of the food, uh, to look at the serving size, how compatible the serving size was with our menus, look at the general climate in our food cafeterias, as well as interviewing many, many students, scores of students that all levels were interviewed by the group. So they will be, uh, compiling this information, they will be providing us a report, um, and also at the same time, providing us, uh, recommendations and reactions to the visit here. So we're trying to be proactive here. Uh, there's no question that these guidelines, um, across the state, not just in North Reading, that these guidelines are impacting the level of participation in the food service program. So there is a, um, a process kind of continuum underway, I think, where people have to get used to some of the changes that they're going to see. So hopefully, uh, within the month or so, I'll have a more detailed reaction for the committee.
So the goal is to make sure we implement and are compliant with all the new regulations, and at the same time, make the meals as palatable as possible to increase participation-
Yes.
-at this time.
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thanks, Carl. Um, actually, Carl, again, um, the North Reading Capital Projects Committee update, and just briefly, um, this has come out of, uh, I think the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. It's been discussed a couple of times at our finance planning team meetings. I'm, I'm not sure I would say it's a unanimous, uh, agreement that this is something that is necessary, however, um, it's an advisory committee, and, uh, I'll let Carl take it from there.
Thank you. I was alluding to the PowerPoint. Now you can look at the PowerPoint. Um, well, I think that the committee knows that, uh, there is a new capital planning Well, I think that the committee knows that there is a new capital planning committee that was voted in by the selectmen, I believe, last Monday. And I'd like to go over some of the high points and how it will impact our capital planning process here in North Reading Public Schools. The first point we need to make here is that there has been a rather significant change in the criteria for what kinds of capital projects can be considered capital projects. And there are three changes that we need to be aware of as we move forward. First, a capital project is, should be considered a major non-recurring expenditure. You know, it will be interesting to see how that gets defined down the road. But that is the first bullet that the committee is adopting. Secondly, the capital expenditure must have a minimum value of $15,000 in the upcoming budget cycle. It will finally increase to $25,000 two years hence. At the same time, the request must have a useful life of five years or more. Thirdly, capital expenditures hopefully are funded as a pay-as-you-go process, meaning from free cash, not bonded. So that's a preferred approach. So as we put together our capital expenditures, I can tell you, if I look back five years, several of the capital expenditures that we have requested in recent years would not fulfill these criteria.
Especially computer equipment, correct?
Certain levels of computer equipment, that's for sure. It depends on how the dollar amounts are quantified, though. Is it a bucket purchase? Is it a singular purchase? We'll have to look at that and see how that's defined. So right at the get-go, we have to examine the sorts of things that are going to fulfill the criteria. The membership of the capital committee is as follows. It will consist of the town administrator, the finance director, two members of the finance committee, two members of the Board of Selectmen, and two designees from the school committee.
Designees? What does that mean?
Not necessarily school committee members.
Anybody that we appoint.
Okay.
It could be Kathy and Carl. It could be Carl and a member of the committee. It could be Kathy and a member.
Gotcha.
Could be Wayne, who has a lot of input into, so it could be any of those.
Well, that's something.
Yes, that's good.
So it is this committee that will go through a process of interviewing all of the department heads who are putting forth a capital request for the upcoming year, and ultimately developing a ranking system for making a recommendation from the capital planning committee to the selectman. There are a set of forms that are contained in your packet, so you can kind of see somewhat of the details look. But I think it's important for us to recognize that one of the changes that we will be seeing here is the manner in which a capital planning, a capital project gets to town meeting. Herefore, the school administration, through the superintendent, made a recommendation to the school committee. The school committee then took a vote, instructed the superintendent to make a recommendation to the selectman who voted to place it into the town meeting warrant. I think that's been a historical process we've used. It appears to me at this level that the process will be a little bit different in that the recommending body to the selectman is now the capital planning committee. So that is the process that is unfolding.
Yeah, I mean, technically, in my experience, that, you know, the selectmen obviously have the ultimate say as to what goes on the warrant, anything that we would recommend for capital improvement. But I can't think of a case where if we had something that they would not put it on the warrant. So maybe I'm wrong. I don't know, Mel, do you remember anything?
Well, but the issue here is that...
But now you're right, it's coming...
They're going to do a ranking. So this committee, and I think coming from the school side, at least I don't have the insight into what the issues are on the town side in terms of capital projects, because we usually limit our projects, and especially now when we're in the new school building process. But there seems to be some issue on the town side that they feel this recommendation committee is needed. The other thing they're going to do is they're going to push all capital into the June town meeting. No longer will capital projects be in October, which isn't a bad idea.
Is the school department going to be considered a department, a single department? In other words, when they talk about department heads, we're not breaking it down. The school committee would be one department.
Yes, that's our understanding, I think, yes.
But each department head would go to this committee and make a presentation.
Well, I think the department heads are talking about all the town side department heads, and then the school committee would be considered a single...
Oh, I think they're talking about me going before them.
No, no, right, right. No, but Jerry's saying not like the principal from each school.
Not like you're going to break down the principal or...
No, no, no.
Okay. We're one single department, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I honestly don't have concern that we're not going to get projects put on the budget as necessary, put on the warrant. It's just, to me, it's just an extra step, it seems. Because I'm, you know, at some point, they're going to make recommendations to the selectmen, and then if our recommendations aren't, we feel high enough, we're going to have to go to the selectmen anyway to make a case, I would assume, so.
Does anybody else have a comment? Because I have like a, I could spend two hours talking about this.
Well, I think the other thing this does, and just looking at it theoretically, is it gives the selectmen maybe more involvement in deciding what's going to actually go on the warrant, because they're going to be accepting of evaluating the rankings that are coming from the committee, as opposed to us just saying to the selectmen, "We want this on the warrant for a capital project," and they put it on as a separate article sometimes. Do you know what I'm saying? In other words, now the selectmen are going to say, "Okay, let's take a look at what the committee recommended. We'll decide what's going on."
It also could enlarge our school budget, because now we're shifting some things away from the capital expenditures.
Away from capital, correct, correct.
Having said that, there was precedent in this October town meeting for the town to bypass the capital process and create several warrants that did not fulfill the criteria of the former regulations. So the police vehicles being the example, and several others. So there was still the opportunity to go to town meeting on a warrant, separate from this process.
Right.
Yeah.
Karen?
All right. I don't think you can prevent me from asking to serve on this.
Ask her.
No, if you want. I want to go to one of these meetings and talk to them about this. I have a lot of problems with this, because I feel as a standing elected committee, when we have a recommendation, it is a recommendation, and this is just process added to it that has really, unless I'm part of this, I'm not going to see the value. So I'm signing myself up for it. I just don't see it right now. And I think that ultimately, we need to be at the table helping them figure out how to do this, because like finance planning team, where I think this is really more appropriate, that's just my opinion, I think that we have an opportunity to really just talk this out and figure out what makes sense.
Well, that was just, you know, one of the arguments was, don't we already do that at the finance planning team?
I'm sure that argument came up.
Superintendent Willis made that argument, so.
To me, it's an extra step in the process that is redundancy of a sort. But it doesn't seem like it's anything that's really going to get in the way.
Well, you could view it as a little bit of a dilution of our...
Well, we're essentially reporting into, right, and we're reporting into an appointed board now. So our recommendations are going to an appointed board rather than going directly to the selectman.
But somehow I have a feeling that if that appointed board was in the way of something important...
We would go to the selectman.
There might be some way of getting around it.
Yeah.
It's just an annoyance, and yes, there is another process. We can get something on the, on town meeting. The challenge, I think, is that we have striven to have a very collegial partnership with the Board of Selectmen that will be, I think, eroded by having this. That's just my feeling, unless I'm not, unless I'm part of it.
Well, that relationship, I mean, extends beyond the Board of Selectmen, too.
The good news is the finance planning team, finance planning team still exists, which is the good news.
As long as that is not going away, I think that's good.
I mean, we, I think, I looked at this, and I don't know what Cliff's feeling was, and I said, "I understand what you're doing here, but to me, it's another step in the process."
More bureaucracy.
Right. And I think we've had a pretty good record of only going to the selectmen with things we think we really need. And we're real conservative with our capital projects.
Very, very, very.
That's my feeling. I think it's a redundancy.
Yeah.
But...
Mike?
I'm not really sure what the purpose of this committee is, honestly.
It came out of the selectmen and the finance committee, and they just feel that it will better, I think it'll better organize what the projects are...
Prioritize, too.
And better set priorities with what the projects are.
Our job is to keep them organized.
What does the finance committee do, then?
Well, that's what, I mean, you have the finance committee, you have the finance planning team, and you have school committee and selectman, correct?
The finance committee, though, they're only, you know, inputted that would be through that, well, yeah, meeting with the Board of Selectmen, but also a recommendation at town meeting. I mean, they don't sign off on, you know...
No, but they do make recommendations to the selectmen.
Recommendations, yeah.
Right. They must prioritize and make recommendations, or do whatever that one slide states it does.
Basically, the question we have to answer is, who are we going to put on the committee?
Right, and should we do it tonight?
You have no choice. It's going to have to be me.
I have no problem putting Karen on it.
I know, but I care for both of yous.
But what is it? Does the committees wish that we have a member of the administrative team and a member of the school committee?
That sounds like a plan.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I guess the question is, should it be our Director of Finance and Operations or the superintendent?
I made a recommendation that it would be the Director of Finance and Operations, because I will be representing the district when I have to go and speak to whatever capital...
Yeah, there's a little appearance of conflict there. That's a good point, if she's going to be the one representing the department.
So we have someone who's very interested, and I'm not going to stand in her way.
Who insists on being a member.
And I'm sure she'll be a fine representative of our committee on that group.
There isn't anything that we won't get through, okay?
So at this point, I'd accept a motion to nominate Mr. Nelson and Ms. Aricetti for the...
So moved.
Capital, what's it called?
Designee.
You want to do them both at the same time, just on the...
Can we do them both at the same time?
Yeah.
Capital Planning Committee.
Capital Planning Committee. So we have a motion by Cliff, second by Jerry, to place Karen and Carl on the capital planning committee. Yes.
Before you, may I ask that you nominate the position, because Carl won't be with us.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
We'll nominate the Director of Finance and Operations and Ms. Aricetti.
Even though Carl will probably be with us anyway.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Unanimous. Thank you, Carl.
Somebody, who moved?
Oh, Cliff made the motion.
I'm second.
Okay, thank you.
Phil's in payroll.
All signed.
All signed. Fiscal year 13 budget report. Carl, just reading this, some unfortunate, some additional spending that is going to, again, squeeze us, but I think we'll be able to get through it.
You know, it's unfortunate that so often we have the same story, but it's our job to tell the story. Patty Bullard informed the superintendent and me early this fall about some district placement issues that were not contained in the FY13 budget. She has been aware of them over the summer, and some of them are coming to pass. So they're extensive. As you can see, if you examine this in detail, that the costs in the tuition area will put our tuition line temporarily, in the red, by almost $200,000. So Kathy and I have spent a fair amount of time discussing what our best reactions are. And I guess, while that's bad news, the good news is, you know, we do a lot of planning. We are always concerned about what kinds of shock absorbers we need to put into place to confront issues of this nature. And there are two that I think we'll be using. First is, as you know, the circuit breaker allotment to North Reading was about $100,000 higher than we had budgeted, and we had not allocated that. That was just sitting out there for the rainy day. Now that it's raining, that'll be our first way of closing the deficit. And secondly, we do a lot of prepayments of spent tuitions in the fall. We hope that those prepayments can be used for other than emergencies. But in this case, we do have to, I think, put our finger in the dyke and use the prepayments that we've used to allocate to this problem. So I think that's the administration's response to how we can deal with these two issues. But it's important also to mention that it's still only mid-October. One of these, it turns out, by the way, without jeopardizing any confidentiality, one of the placements is in excess of $100,000 annually. So it may be that that won't continue for the entire year, and if that's the case, we'll recoup some of this problem. So...
I think that clearly by expecting these rainy days, potholes, whatever you want to call it, we'll be able to cover this. But I think where it comes into play is at the end of the year, when we want to have, hopefully have some funds to pre-buy supplies for the following year, as you said, maybe prepay some tuitions. This will put a crimp in that. And that plays into our budget for the next year, and when we build the budget, because if we're not going to have that cushion of $100,000, $200,000 to buy supplies and prepay tuitions, we have to put it in next year's budget, which eliminates flexibility.
Well, you know, I was so pleased that in the, for the first time in the budget goals this year, there is a statement that says, "Manage unforeseen costs, special education, energy, and transportation." And to me, that's reinforcement of a budget philosophy that doesn't earmark every single dollar in the budget. You know, it's so tempting to do that, and, you know, you have to find that fine line between quantifying all the money that you have and hiring all the people that you want to hire and buying all the supplies you want to supply, versus retaining some of it so that you don't have to, like some districts do, by the way, there are districts around that literally lay off people as the year progresses due to an emergency of this nature. So I'm so appreciative that the committee supports that philosophy, which allows us to do this. You know, there's another side to that, and that is that I can remember going to finance committee meetings from time to time in years past, and there'd been some modest, I don't know if it's criticism or an observation, that, you know, gee, you have some high balances in your circuit breaker fund or things of that nature. Why aren't you devoting that to your budget problem? And I think this is the kind of way we answer that question, so.
Well, and our history tells us that every few years, we have these issues crop up, and very rarely do we have issues where, oh, we're saving $100,000 or $200,000 in this budget area. So you know what they say about those who ignore history, right?
Are doomed to repeat it.
Right.
And we don't freeze spending here. And again, many districts freeze spending every single year to get through the year, and we find a strategy not to do that. When we're level funding school budgets for eight or nine years successively, freezing budgets would be almost catastrophic to them, so.
Are there any other issues on here we need to look at? Everything else looks...
No, that's it. And I, you'll see in future budget reports that deficit, I mean, how would the committee like to see that? Would you like to see that deficit showing throughout the year that represents the initial budget allocation?
Well, I think that's, I mean, I think that's helpful to show what we budgeted and how much we're over. I think it's helpful to, yeah, it's a reminder.
It's a reminder of anything else.
Okay. You'll know then behind the scenes, then...
We're paying it, but...
Yes. And we'll see how that works itself out, because this is a big one. Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments on that? Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Gifts and donations. Of course, we had the generous donation tonight from the North Reading Education Foundation.
And that is it.
And that's it, okay. Subcommittee updates. Finance planning team met last Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Getting ready for next year's budget, and I think the next meeting we'll be getting numbers, the early numbers for revenue expectations, et cetera, and they'll be really early. Free cash is a little, is, I think, a little more than $300,000, which is a little less than the finance committee would like to see the town have right now. It had been well over $1 million, and a large number, a large amount of that was spent at the October town meeting, including $100,000 for the wall repair at the little school. Interestingly enough, the money we've borrowed for the school is invested in, it's in three different, it's not invested, it's in three different savings accounts or CDs at three different banks, and probably getting a whopping .001 percent. But of that money, there's been approximately $40,000 in interest, and that all goes back into the general fund. So, and that's the law, is you have to separate the interest out. So it's benefiting the town as it sits there. And I believe they said, do you remember how much they said has been paid to the school project so far? Something between $2 and $3 million, Carl?
No, it's more than that.
Is it more than that?
Yeah, it's considerably more than that.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't remember.
I don't dare venture it.
Okay. But there's also...
Much more than that.
So there, in addition to us paying out of what we borrow, then there's the coordination with the MSBA, and then how much they pay for their payment, correct? And that's all proceeding.
It's not a reimbursement anymore. They pay as they go.
Right. They pay as they go. So it's not like in the past where you'd get a lump sum check when the project was over.
They pay as they go, but it's a little delayed.
Right, a little delayed. But everything is going smoothly there, I believe. I don't think there are any issues there. Is there anything else? I think that was the...
I think that was...
And then we talked about the capital project...
Committee.
Committee. And I think that's, that's it. Any other subcommittees' reports? No?
Just the date on that. Is the athletics subcommittee going to be the 31st then, Kathy?
The athletics subcommittee is still in flux at this point in time. I'm asking that after this meeting, if I could just sit with you and Mrs. Aricetti to nail down a date. The problem is that one of our members is teaching classes this year more than last year, and so we have to deal with the green and gold days, and they rotate on a six-day schedule, which means it's a moving target. So I have some possibilities I'd like to share with you to set a date after this meeting.
And we need to set a date, I guess, for evaluations subcommittee.
I would like to do that.
Okay, so if you can send us some dates.
Yes, I will.
The other thing I guess I should mention is we had a great session with the NRTA and their representative, talking about the teacher evaluation that we have to get approved this year, and we're moving along very quickly. I think the next meeting is two weeks?
October 29.
October 29, so it's next week.
Yes.
Next week. And we're moving through that process quickly, and right now, I don't foresee any problems, fingers crossed. But I think the NRTA rep has been through this with a number of school districts who erased the top districts, sorry. Sorry they erased the top districts, but we aren't, so we're a year later, and she has a good deal of experience in putting these together. So it's been really helpful. It's Camille.
It's Claudette.
Claudette, Camille, yeah.
Camille Visconti.
Camille Visconti, correct.
Great.
Okay. Enrollment?
Yes. At the last school committee meeting, I did include in your packet October 1 enrollment. Those are the official enrollments that are taken annually from each of the schools and submitted to the Department of Education. And in this district, there is some historical work that has been done around 10-year enrollment projections. So I've included the 10-year enrollment projections, taking us out to 2020, 2021, as well as some additional statistics regarding the percentage change from grade five to six. as well as some additional statistics regarding the percentage change from grade five to six, as well as from grade eight to nine. In addition to that, I've included a new report for you that I have seen in other school districts that not only talks about the enrollment currently in district, but also includes students that are placed in alternative schools out of district. So, we can go through each one of these and I'll be happy to answer some questions.
Did you send that report? I didn't.
It looks like this.
Oh, I didn't get that. I can look on here though. I don't think I got that on the.
On the Dropbox?
No.
I have.
That's right, I can look at Karen's.
Okay, very good. So, if we take a look at the enrollment projections, the 10-year enrollment projections, there are assumptions that are listed for you at the bottom of the page. The integrated pre-K enrollment reflects special ed students in typically developing. The kindergarten enrollment through 2016-17 represents 15% growth over five-year reported birth numbers. Grade one enrollment through 2020-2021 reflects 9% growth over previous, the previous year's kindergarten. Grade six enrollment shows a 5% decrease from the previous year's grade five enrollment. The grade nine enrollment shows a 16% decrease from the previous year's grade eight enrollment. Both of those reductions or decreases are predicated on the percent of students that leave the district to attend other schools or who move to other parts of the state or outside of the state. All enrollments do not reflect out of district special ed placements, that's why I included this other chart for you as a snapshot of one year. And enrollments after 2012-13 obviously are projected and totals are rounded to whole numbers.
Just so you know, I seriously question that 16% number. I've talked to Kathy about that. I know that if you look back over the last five or six years, that's what it averages out to. I think you look at how few, it wasn't 16% this year, it was 12. I think that reflects the new school project and my guess is that 16% is going to be around the 10 to 12% area and I think we're going to see another 10 or 12 students each year at our high school population. That's just my guess, educated guess. It's also interesting, the first, it's actually, it's not as, as, as high as I thought it would be, but the first three years, well, four years of the high school being open will basically be at capacity at the high school. And what's the middle school capacity?
630.
630.
So, the middle school capacity will, will be fine.
And 740.
Right. The first year of the high school will be at, the projections say will be at 744. So, we'll be.
But the other way to look at that, Mel, is it's right on the mark.
No, that's what I just said.
It's pretty close.
The first four years will be right, right, right there.
And that was the argument that we made with MSBA.
I, I.
What about the housing turnover?
I, I, I still argue that these numbers are too low, but we'll, we'll have to see. Well, well, I, I can't, I, I know that, I know that the numbers are going to go down, but I don't think they're going to get down this much. So, it's so.
Why would they go down? If, if everyone that currently lives in a home now that doesn't have children going to the school system in the next 10-year turn over their homes.
Right.
And the home inventory is double what it was 30 years ago here in North Reading, there's going to be a significant increase.
That's all anecdotal. I like that word.
Yeah.
Well, it is anecdotal.
It's anecdotal, but I think.
It's scientific data.
I think.
I don't know how scientific this is.
Well, it's based on some type of.
It's not, but it's not, Jerry, it's not, they don't take a look at housing turnover or anything, correct?
I can tell you that I compared these enrollment projections that had been done in this district by the Superintendent for the last 20 years and I compared them to the NESDEC enrollment projections and we pay money to NESDEC annually in order to take a look at the live births in a five-year period that is scientifically used to project out for five years only, not 10 or 20 years, but for five years beyond the current enrollment as to what we can expect for attendance in the school system. So, it's predicated on live births. They also do take a look at housing permits that are pulled and how much that percentage either increases or decreases and that lends some scientific analysis to making predictions around trends. But again, it's not an exact science, it's trend analysis.
Well, I think the issue for this town is one, the town's pretty much built out, there's no space for any humongous developments anymore.
We've been hearing that for 20 years, but I tend to agree with it now.
Right. But Jerry, I just drove up, there's a new one up on Marblehead Street, off Marblehead Street, there's 24, 25 houses going in there and there's already 10 or 12 built. But there are a lot of, a lot of things that we need to factor in. One is desirability of the community. When you appear every year in the Boston Magazine Top 50 High Schools, et cetera, et cetera. Two, when you're building a brand-new high school and a middle school, I think those are factors that may draw more people into the community. So, I think these are a great guideline so that the community at large knows this year, our population of in-district students is 2,601 and if you play that out through 2020-21, it goes down to 2,225, which is a reduction of 376 students. So, my guess, it won't be that much, but, you know, we'll, we'll see because I think this is, this is still a desirable community for people to move to because of the school system and I think the new buildings only enhance that desirability.
I agree. We'll need to really pay attention, particularly to the statistics. I just thought some interesting observations around the percent change from grade five to, to grade six, taking a look at the last five years of data. The change in the variance, either positive or negative, we saw the biggest swing of eight students less leaving the district from grade five to grade six. So, you can see that the percent change is 3.9% as compared to 6.7 the previous year for an average of about 5% leaving the district in the last five years and that's similar to the previous five years, which came out to about 4.9%. But you can see the variance between last year and this year is pretty significant. So, that's in concert with what you're saying, Mr. Webster, around taking a look at what's the impact of the anticipated building project on the trends.
Right. I think, and the high school for the last six years has been in double digits.
That's correct.
Before the last six years, there had been occasional years where it was in double digits, but a lot of years where it was in single digits. Now, if you go way back, I think there were other issues back in the late 80s as to why parents were taking their kids out of North Reading schools and sending them to private schools. I think there may have been some overcrowding issues, et cetera. But there, there were a number of years where we had really small percentage. Now, part of that's demographics too. When you have a different set of demographics moving into your town, then there may be more people who, from the get-go, have said, I'm going to send my kid to private school in the ninth grade or in the seventh grade, sixth grade even. So, but, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable that you're going to keep a close watch on this and, you know, next year will be interesting to see what kind of drop-off there is between fifth and sixth and eighth and ninth because if we start to see a trend of less, then my guess is that, that trend's going to continue and we're going to see fewer going off to private schools.
I have a little bit of context to share with you. I asked both principals, the principal of the middle school and the principal of the high school to give me context around student enrollment and transfers and I can tell you, last year at the high school, we had 26 students leave eighth grade and attend private schools. This year, that number decreased to 15. Interestingly though, last year, we had seven students leave to go to a vocational school and this year, we had 13. So, we've seen an increase, almost double the number of students that chose to go to a vocational school. And interesting is, and at the middle school, last year, we had 14 students leave to attend private school, this year 10. And last year, only four moved, this year, 10 students moved out of the district. So, again, that is something that you can't quantify from one year to the next as terms of trend analysis because whether they move or not, isn't based on anything scientific, it's based on their own personal situations. And so, finally, that last report that was included in your packet talks about, we have 37 students that are placed in alternative schools and I thought it was very interesting that that placement, outplacement in this chart reflects grade three as the first grade level where a student is out of district. So, for the last several years, students in the lower grades have remained in district and I think that that speaks to the work that has been done and continues to be done to provide programming for our students in district as opposed to sending them out of district. I'd like to also draw your attention to the last column titled PG. You can see that we started a program this year to provide services to students as post-graduates and there were five of them. We have one student that is in an outside placement for a postgraduate program. Had we not started that program in district, we would have a total of six students in an outside placement.
Correct.
Where we only have one currently. So, I credit Patricia Bullard and her faculty for being able to service those students in district. Those would be five additional tuitions.
Awesome.
Any questions about any of the reports?
As long as you're going to keep a close watch on it.
I promise I will keep a very close watch.
I want to call every time we get one more or one less student in the district. No.
Maybe you do.
Talk to you tomorrow morning.
Maybe you do, no.
Okay. Administrative report.
Text awards.
Yes. Kathy.
It's up for Jerry.
I'd like to address a situation that occurred today at our high school because I'd like to bring the committee up to speed. At approximately 11:30 this morning, a custodian found a bullet on the floor of the boys locker room. And I have several announcements that had been made to parents and to staff regarding this situation. So, I'm going to give you the second to last update. Since that time, the school administration conducted a search and this report went out at 1:38. So, since that time, the school administration conducted a search of the area, including, including student belongings. The search concluded at 12:20 PM, along with the assistance of the North Reading Police Department. And at no time was they determined to be a threat to the welfare of the school or the students and the staff. The students were, and staff, were told to remain in their classrooms as the search was conducted. And then, when this particular alert now message went out, and I was in the high school when it, this occurred, it was about 12:10 when all, no, about 12:20 when all regular activities resumed and classes were switching again and lunches resumed as normal. And Mr. Bernard went on to thank the students and the staff for their outstanding cooperation during this incident. What I'd like to add is another alert now message went out at 6:24 PM, again, giving